convene with all members present with Carmella Vitale absent excuse please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have a motion for the regular minutes of November 23rd, 2015.
They're moved.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
And a motion for the regular minutes of December 14th, 2015.
They're moved.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Okay, welcome all. I apologize for, uh, we went a little bit long in our executive session and, uh, I hate keeping people waiting, but we are here. Happy Easter all. Couple of proclamations. The first one is, uh, national service recognition. And, uh, let me, I don't think anyone's here to accept this proclamation, so I'll do it from here before I come down below. And National Service Recognition Day, April 5th, 2016, whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's cities are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet needs. And AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our communities, from educating students for the jobs of 21st century, to supporting veterans and military families, to providing health services and helping communities recover from national disasters. And AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants serve in more than 50,000 locations across the country bolstering the civic neighborhood and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. And national service represents a unique private and public partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increases the return on taxpayer dollars. And national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them through future endeavors. And the Corporation for National and Community Service shares priority with county officials, mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joined in National League of Cities, National Association of Counties, Cities of Service, and mayors and county officials across this country for Mayor and County Recognition Day for National Service on April 5th. Now therefore I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body hereby proclaim April 5th, 2016 as National Service Recognition Day and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service to our country, to thank those who serve and find ways to give back to communities. And Madison is a fine example of how our residents give back. So I thank you all. Come on down for presentations. Hey. Stand right over here and we'll face the audience then. And this is Autism Awareness, Acceptance, Inclusion Month, April 2016. Whereas autism is pervasive development disorder affecting the social communication and behavioral skills of those affected by it, and whereas as more health professionals become proficient in diagnosing autism, more children are being diagnosed diagnosed on autism spectrum resulting in rates as high as 1 in 68 nationally and 1 in 45 children in New Jersey. And whereas while there is no cure for autism, it is well documented that individuals with autism receive treatment early in their lives, it's often possible for these individuals to lead significantly improved lives. And whereas individuals with autism often require a lifetime of specialized and community support services to ensure their health and safety and to support families' resilience as they manage the psychological and financial burdens autism presents. And whereas Autism New Jersey is spearheading an awareness, acceptance, inclusion effort in order to educate parents, professionals, and the general public about autism and its effects. Now therefore I, Robert H. Conley, the Mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body hereby proclaim April 2016 as National Autism Awareness, Acceptance, and Inclusion Month and urge all residents to become better educated on the subject of autism spectrum disorders. And on Friday, we're wearing what color? We're blue on Friday, so. Peter, would you like to say a few words?
Yes.
I'm Antoinette, I'm his mom. There's proof, early intervention, getting them early, getting them with all the interventions that they can.
The definition of autism is a mental condition characterized by difficulty forming relationships with other people and using language and abstract concepts. I define it as a mental and sometimes physical roadblock that impairs communications with other people but can be overcome. All throughout my life, I have had to fight obstacles in my disability, which is autism. I have never been given anything for free. I've had to fight for and earn everything I have. My disability gives me rough time when I need to communicate and it tangles up my social skills. For a person to overcome autism, they need mental strength, support from family and friends, and must believe in themselves. What society can do to help autistic people is to support them, engage in social interactions, and not degrade them. I will say one thing but I don't mean another because I forgot to think before I spoke. When I was two, I was mute, not able to speak. But now, in some people's opinions, I talk too much. I now express my thoughts, my dreams, and my emotions for the future.
That was a-
Yeah, I actually went to two days in a row, um, early to a teacher that he had last year who taught him how to do speeches, and he dedicated to get a speech going so that he wouldn't be so tongue-tied and, uh, product, so I'm pretty proud of him.
Excellent, well done. And just so you know that we televise our council meetings out, so this will be played out to the community over the next couple of weeks, so your message will go far beyond this room and to all of Madison. So thank you for coming to join us today, Peter. Samantha and Marlene, want to come forward?
Got a cup of water, 'cause I'm dying.
There we go. We are very proud of the work that our Health Department does on a daily and weekly and monthly and annual basis in not only in Madison but the towns we serve, so it's an honor to present this National Public Health Week proclamation. Whereas the week of April 4th through 10th is 2016 is National Public Health Week and the theme is Healthiest Nation 2030. And whereas since 1995, American Public Health Association through its sponsorship of National Public Health Week has educated the public policymakers, public health professionals about issues important to improving public's health. And whereas over 25 years, U.S. life expectancy has increased but at a slower rate than in other countries, and studies consistently show that we have a lower life expectancy than comparable countries. And whereas there's significant difference in health status such as obesity, poor mental health, and infectious disease of people living in the healthiest states compared to those living in the least healthy states. And whereas public health professionals help communities prevent, prepare for, withstand, and recover from the impact of full range of health threats including disease outbreaks such as the Zika virus, natural disasters, and disasters caused by human activity. And whereas public health action together with scientific and technological advances have played a major role in reducing and in some cases eliminating the spread of infectious diseases and establishing today's disease surveillance and control systems. And whereas the percentage of adults smoking cigarettes in the United States, the leading cause of preventable disease and death in this country, has decreased from 20.9% in 2005 to 16.8% in 2014. So that's quickly, uh, five, basically five percentage points in a decade, or half a decade. I'm sorry, a decade, doing the math there. Now therefore I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body hereby proclaim the week of April 4th through 10th, 2016 as National Public Health Week and call upon the people of Madison to observe this week by helping our families, friends, and neighbors, coworkers, and leaders better understand the value of public health and supporting great opportunities to adopt preventive lifestyle habits in the light of this year's theme, Healthiest Nation 2030. Congratulations and thank you Samantha for coming to accept it.
Thank you for acknowledging Public Health Week. I just want to say that we work, um, very hard at the Health Department to help ensure public's health in Madison. We have an event up, coming up on Sunday, on the 3rd, at Whole Foods, um, from 11:30 a.m. to 3 p.m., and it's just open to the public. You can come see us there and our themes for every day this week. We have a health theme each day and, um, we encourage you to have, to do, um, a little challenge and, um, we'll give you some information, so come see us there.
Thank you Samantha. Thank you Marlene. Thanks for coming. All right, and we'll see you Sunday, Whole Foods. Okay, reports from committees, utilities. Mr. Wolkowitz.
Uh, thank you Mayor. There is no report this week from the Electric Department, however, there is one of course from the Water Department. I had mentioned this before, we're continuing to take on the state mandated testing for the quality of our water, and as you all know, you get an annual report as a result of that. There have been 53 requests for locating and marking underground utilities for homeowners, contractors, and other utilities. Four curb boxes were checked and whether it was turned off and on for inside plumbing repairs. To skip ahead on a few things, three new meters were installed for new house construction. I always find that interesting, that we had six houses in two weeks that are new construction. There was a two-inch water shut-off, uh, as part of the demolition of the KRE project. And Well E, which we referred to before, is still being worked on although progress is good and we're hopeful that it will be fixed soon. The only other thing I would like to mention, just because it strikes me as kind of unusual, is that we've actually loaned a fire hydrant to Drew University as they wait for a replacement for one of theirs that broke. So we're in the, uh, we're in the business now of lending fire hydrants, so it's very good of us. That's, that's my report.
Thank you. Health, Mr. Catalonello.
Thank you Mayor. Um, sorry, froze. So, uh, the Madison Health Department wants to remind residents that the community needs assessment is still open and focus groups with residents and community partners will be beginning soon. The data collected will assist the coalition in understanding what can make Madison and the Chatham's better communities for aging in place. The survey is available at www.surveymonkey.com/. We'll post it. It's listed on RoseNet. Our hard copy is available to Madison YMCA, the Senior Center, and the Public Library. Residents of Madham, Chatham Borough, or Chatham Township, age 55 years and older, are encouraged to complete the survey and share their thoughts about transportation, housing, community activity, and health services. For questions or to participate in the survey or focus groups, please contact the Madison Health Department. Madison Health and Police Department sponsor an employee wellness program during Colorectal Cancer Awareness Month. Colorectal cancer is a devastating disease and without proper screening and attention to the warning signs, it can be fatal. It is fatal. Uh, the Madison Health Department and the Madison Police Department understand that and the importance of having a healthy workforce and therefore have kicked off their employee lunch and learn program with a presentation on colorectal cancer prevention. The program takes place during employee lunch hours and is sponsored by Whole Foods. Subsequent programs will be held quarterly. Anyone who is interested in presenting health topics to the employees or participating in the program should once again contact the Madison Health Department. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you. Finance and Borough Clerk, Mr. Landrigan.
Thank you Mayor. Okay, first Finance. The Finance Staff has just completed the quarterly review of the pension status of every employee in the borough. This is important because we need to make sure the correct amount of contributions are being paid by both the Borough and the employees. The Affordable Care Act mandates that Form 1095-CB be completed. As an applicable large employer under the act, the Borough is required to report the health insurance that was offered to each employee as well as the coverage for each employee. Thank you to the Finance Department for taking on this additional responsibility. Last week the Borough will, last week the Borough paid the annual employee contribution to the pension system for all employees. In regards to taxes, the Tax Collector's Office is looking into automation that would allow wiring of payments from banks that collect escrows from various mortgage companies. This will expedite the receipt of the money and be a more efficient way to post payments and receive the funds. In regards to tax appeals, so far the Borough has received 31 appeals for the 2016 tax year, which is a relatively small amount. Residents are reminded that tax appeals must be filed by April 1st. In regards to the budget, the user-friendly budget and municipal budget document were both sent down to the Division of Local Government Services. We are in a state exam year and expect comments to come from Trenton. We expect to stay on track and have the final budget hearing and adoption on April 11th. From the Borough Clerk's Office, in anticipation of the June 7th primary election, the filing deadline for nomination petitions for county committee members as well as municipal office is April 4th, 2016 by 4 p.m. Forms are available in the Borough Clerk's Office. May 17th is voter, is the voter registration deadline for the primary election. The Borough Clerk's Office will be open until 8 p.m. Mail-in ballot applications are also available in the Borough Clerk's Office or online at marselections.org. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you. Community Affairs, Ms. Bailey, and if you have a backup for Carmella on public safety?
I do have public, I'll start with public safety. From the Fire Department, the Morris County Office of Emergency Management is sponsoring the Bleeding Control for the Injured, an advanced training program. This course teaches participants basic life safety, medical interventions including bleeding control with a tourniquet, bleeding control with hemostatic gauze packs or topical hemostatic agents, and skills necessary to open an airway in order for a casualty to breathe. This is a four-hour class which is held at the Morris County Training Facility. The Madison Police Department is our lead agency for Madison's first responders to register for this class. Madison firefighters, both career and volunteer personnel, will be taking this course, which is offered on different dates and times during the months of April and May. That's from the Fire Department. From the Police Department, on March 19th, the Madison PBA along with Drew University, the Madison Chamber of Commerce, and the Downtown Development Commission hosted a successful prison ball tournament to benefit the Captain Sorella Scholarship Fund. Everyone who attended the event had a great time and they're planning to do it next year. So from Community Affairs, um, from the Downtown Development Commission, please save Saturday, May 7th, that is May Day. Consider making a donation or signing up as a volunteer, and you can find more information on the DDC page on RoseNet. And the deadline to have your name included on the May Day t-shirt has been extended to, um, said to May 28th, I think she meant March 28th. The DDC's four standing committees, Sign and Facade, Public Improvement, University Relations, and the new Marketing and Economic Development Committees have all confirmed their membership, established meeting schedules, and set goals for 2016. They are looking forward to a busy and productive year. The Farmers Market will be returning to Central Avenue between Main Street and Cook Avenue for the 2016 season on Thursday, June 2nd. The market hours will be again, uh, 2 to 7 p.m. Planning is now underway, and we are going to continue having the weekly musical performances and an expanded list of, uh, participating vendors. From the Seniors, Edna Ierly Byrne attended a conference in Washington, D.C. of the 2016 American Society on Aging. She wants to thank all council members, um, for making that possible. She had attended an enormous number of sessions, including Aging in the Community, Unleashing the 8 Trillion Longevity Bonus, Creating a Priceless Legacy, Making Aging in Place a Reality, Age Friendly Communities, Aging as Financial Implications, Building an Age Friendly Community, Planning Comes of Age, The Case for an Age Friendly Community, Poverty is a Health Issue, and, um, the United Nations Post 2015 Sustainable Development Agenda and Older Americans. She will be, uh, reporting back to the Senior Advisory Committee on this and will have some recommendations for our seniors. Then from the Recreation Department, uh, they're very busy. The spring-summer field schedule continues to grow. We will now be serving 21 different programs across 14 fields. The spring registrations are closed. Our USSI Spring Camp offerings are now posted on the Recreation page of RoseNet. We have 11 different programs available for children ages 2 to 11. The Department of Public Works has commenced regular field maintenance, which is lining and cutting, and was able to repair several playing surfaces, including the Sunny Vital Memorial Field, Rosedale 2, and Dodge. The Madison Girl Softball Program is using its annual $3,000 grant to upgrade and repair the backstop and dugout fencing at the Madison Junior School Fields as they start regular play there this spring. Over 500 coaches have submitted and passed background checks in accordance with the program we start in January 2015. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you. And Public Works and Engineering, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First from the Public Works Department, uh, they're out busy filling potholes. Thankfully, it wasn't that bad a winter this year. Uh, and also they want to let everyone know that yard waste pickups have resumed on the regular schedule posted on your, um, your garbage and waste collection, uh, schedule. Um, and then from the Engineering Department, we have several things. First, on roads, um, just the county, the Borough Engineer wants to let everyone know that Luanica Way, uh, the shoulder on the west side that's been utilized for parking for many years by residents that walk the Giraud de Farms path. The Giraud de Farms Open Space Management Association is proposing some limited improvements to better define those parking areas along the county road by applying to the county for a road opening permit. Residents are advised if they have concerns to contact either the Open Spaces Management Association, the County of Morris, or our own Borough Engineer, Bob Vogel, for more information. Additionally, on the roads, uh, crack ceiling work for Garfield and Woodland have been received from Micropave through the Morris County Cooperative bidding process and contracts for that work expects to be awarded by the end of the month. For sanitary sewer, um, everyone I think is currently aware, but we're going to be cleaning and inspecting the Madison-Chatham Joint Meeting trunk sewer between Garden Ave and Brooklake. Uh, that's expected to be done next week. Uh, both the joint meeting and Madison metering equipment will be removed for two days while this work is being done. Uh, and then there was also some emergency work to repair a failed sanitary sewer connection at the Civic Center. Uh, it was completed successfully by Accurate Sewer along the guidelines of emergency purchasing procedures. Uh, Mr. Wolkowitz has already updated this on water. And so finally from parks, uh, the Memorial Field Ice Skating Rink is going to be receiving both irrigation improvements, final topsoil and seeding in April, so the new playing surfaces can be fully established this spring and summer, and they'll be ready for fall play. Thank you.
Thank you. Communications and petitions.
None received Mayor, thank you.
All right, now we're on to the first of two invitations for discussion. This one is limited to items on our discussion agenda and resolutions that are on the consent. So items that are on our discussion, zoning board adjustment, annual report, stormwater ordinance amendment, and electric utility rebate program, where you can comment on any, um, zoning, I mean, any resolutions. Anyone wishing to comment on any of those items, please step forward. Seeing none, and seeing Joe ready for number one, I will ask Joe Santoro to please step forward with the zoning board annual report.
I have some materials to hand out real quick before we get going. Thank you. I'd like to appear before the governing body and talk about zoning for a short file. Uh, as you're probably aware, annually, the Board of Adjustment is required to produce an annual report about its activities, and that includes a resolution making recommendations as to potential changes to the ordinances, and that's submitted to the governing body and the planning board. If you take that action. So just in summary for last year, uh, we had about 40 applications, so down slightly from the prior year of 43 applications, so we made 36 or rendered 36 decisions in the zoning board. 35 affirmatives or approved applications, one was denied. Uh, that's accounts, that accounts for about 97%, but going with that FOIA, we don't approve everything. What you don't see, and this is not really a spectator sport going to the zoning board, what you don't see is the amount of interaction that goes on with applicants where we modify or negotiate some of these applications on the fly. It's not unusual for an applicant to return once, sometimes even twice, with a different set of plans to make it work for, for everyone, including the community. So, in terms of some statistics, or the most important statistic in the annual report, about 57% of the applications that were approved, 57% of them, uh, had to do with impervious coverage, and so that's the specter of stormwater management. Again, I'm sure you're very familiar with that as being somewhat problematic. Uh, that's second only to go and set that, so it's, it's something we're dealing with constantly, uh, in the zoning board. So with that, that's a summary of the annual report. I'd like to move to the resolution, which I've just handed out. So, there are a number of suggestions here. Uh, number four, I've highlighted it by the way, to make it kind of easy to pick up on what we want to talk about. Uh, currently, if you, if you have an application in town, you only get a credit for, um, very little opportunity to have credits applied in terms of pervious, semi-pervious materials that could be used in the application. So the only opportunity you have right now is, uh, pavers that's set in stand, instead in sand, right? Have gravel, it's 100% impervious coverage, so there's very limited opportunity there. So, uh, we had a recent application, we're working on an application now in the R3 zone on Walnut, and the applicant there had even suggested using, um, pervious cement or concrete that's allowable in the OR zone, and to use that in the R3 zone. We thought that was a great idea. As a matter of fact, Frank Russell, I don't think I've ever seen him so excited, uh, to see something like that. And we thought it would be a good idea to, uh, if the governing body were to consider expanding that capability to allow other applicants in other zones to take advantage of that. So if you flip the page, summarize that here, so this is Section 19532, spot 7, and it's the Office of Research Zone Regulations, and highlighted in red are some interesting things. So under number 2, you have a 40% reduction in pervious coverage for impervious concrete pavers with stone storage bed, 50% reduction in pervious coverage for porous paving systems. So there are some pretty substantial benefits that you can gain by, um, by using some of these materials. So I spoke to Bob Vogel just a little bit before, and Bob, you seem to be- So I spoke to, uh, Bob Vogel just a little bit before, and Bob, you seem to be...
You gotta step up to the microphone if you're gonna answer, sorry.
That's Joe. Uh, you know, I think it's worked out reasonably well in the commercial zones, and I see no reason why it can't be applied to residential zones as well. Um, so, uh, yeah, there may be slight modifications necessary, but I think as far as the goal of a best management practice, which complies with DEP standards, um, this is a good ordinance, and, uh, we can use it more thoroughly throughout our other zones.
I think it provides, it would provide a strong incentive for residents and developers to utilize improved stormwater management techniques. I think it would reduce the number of applications that we have and would promote recharge, which is, you know, we're sitting over the Berry Valley Aquifer, and so the more water we can put back into the ground, the better. So I think it promotes good zoning. Uh, number six, I think is most, is, is, uh, important. We have, uh, currently, there's a trigger in the ordinance that says if you're increasing, uh, square footage on an application by 400 square feet or more, then that would, uh, uh, trigger the need for dry wells. And there's a bit of a hole in this ordinance and, and with respect to, say, vertical, um, improvement. So if somebody's going to, let's say, have a cape or a split or a ranch and you're going up, ah, that doesn't count. So, um, you're, you're basically removing a roof and going up, but that doesn't count as new roof area. So, yeah, it's a little surprising when I learned that. So you may have, um, you know, a ranch that is going to go up to a second floor and add 399 square feet in the back, and it doesn't count as new roof area. So if you were to build a house like that, you have to have stormwater management, right? But there's a hole there. So what we want to propose is any kind of vertical expansion covered under that. Talked about that with Bob Vogel as well. He seemed to think that was a good idea. Um, we've even talked on the board about whether it makes sense to even make that, that 400 square foot a smaller figure, maybe something more nominal like 100 square feet. The idea is we have a lot of stormwater management issues in town, and we're trying to deal with them, and, uh, difficult. It really is difficult. So it would be good to, I think, build this into the, into the ordinances. And lastly, okay, seven, the, under the ordinances, if you have a principal building structure, um, you know, that, ordinances promote embellishments, uh, things like, uh, cupolas, bell towers, things that provide visual appeal, and they don't count on a principal building, it doesn't count in terms of height. So you can add one of these structures on top of your house, it does not count, it's not a variance. However, if you're looking at an accessory structure like your garage, a detached garage, that language is not there. So somebody looking at that would think, whoa, if I add a cupola, something appealing to the top of that garage, it's gonna trigger a variance. And indeed, we've had some variances we've had to deal with. So there's a, sort of an inconsistency in terms of dealing with this. Um, so you end up with somebody who doesn't put this embellishment on their garage, or they, it's not sized properly, and so I think for consistency purposes, it would make sense to try and promote that, uh, by, by addressing it. Um, I've talked to Bob Vogel about it, there are a couple of different ways to size it correctly, but I think we should... That's it. Pretty simple.
So...
I think it would be, uh, pretty effective if you made some changes to these ordinances if you deal with it all the time, and that got me managing.
Questions for Joe? Uh, one question I, just to clarify again on that, uh, the roof, I was a little confused. So, so let's say it's a, a ranch at a level, so the roof, roof structure doesn't, size doesn't change at all?
Same footprint.
Same, exact same footprint and, uh, same, same roof area, really, but it just is...
Does not trigger the need for dry wells. Let's say you have that same scenario and somebody was adding, you know, 15 by 15 on the back to even make it bigger. Guess what? No dry wells. So you need, I think you need to maybe add, say, if you're adding floor area, square footage for flooring, you're going up, then that should count as essentially new roof area that has to go into a dry well. Follow?
So, um, so basically, it's kind of, uh, as someone adds a level, it's kind of imposing, imposing a, uh, stormwater management, uh, system on them. So even though the, the runoff has not...
Mark, if you're adding floor area...
As long as there's floor area, um, well, yeah, because they're adding a level, they've, they've added floor, floor area, but the runoff from the roof has not increased, per se, because the roof area is, is the same unless they did addition on, on top of it.
But it's a missed opportunity in terms of trying to address...
Right, so, so I'm just clarifying that it is, we're just using that as an opportunity to im- improve our stormwater management, even though that they're not increasing the flow, but we, we now have an opportunity to have someone...
If that was a tear down and you were building a house, you'd have to put it all into dry wells.
So, yep, okay.
Not kind of a slippery slope? Why not just say everybody has to do it no matter what? What, what's stopping that? They go, just, if you don't have it, put it in. I mean, in this case, you could see a resident coming saying, hold on a second, I'm not doing anything to change the square footage of my roof or the impervious coverage, and yet you're forcing me to do this, which is, it's not necessarily cheap, you know, those of us who have done it. I'm not necessarily against it, I'm just saying, you know, where do you draw the line? And, and why don't we just say, you know, if, if you're gonna take that step, what's to stop someone from saying, well, we want to take care of storm management, so if you don't have it, you have to do it.
It's, it's fairly common, whether it's to the planning board or, um, to zoning board, to use that as an opportunity to improve stormwater management. So you, you wouldn't make it retroactive, okay, now everyone needs a, a, a dry well, but the opportunity, okay, you've opened the door, and so we're gonna make, make things better for the neighborhood and, um, the world, you know? That, 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 I think that would be the justification.
While you're spending all that money, you might as well take care of a wet yard, because it's, it's quite often that there's other problems there. So it, it takes care of, takes care of a number of problems usually. Not unusual to walk up to a property and you see leaders leading out with extensions into the neighbor's yard, things like that, it's not good. So, I mean, when we see these applications, they come in, we're gonna ask them to do that, when it would really be sound to include that in the ordinance, because in effect, it's like building a new house for, for stormwater management purposes. Up, you might as well fix it. See this all the time.
Yep. Other quick, other questions or... So the, the process, I guess, would be one of two ways, that the, the council can take the lead and produce the ordinances, it goes to the planning board and comes back, or it could be the other way around, where the planning board does it, comes to council? Is, is that, am I, uh, correct on that, or that's...
Goes, right now, what happens is that the review starts here, then goes to the planning board for review, then come back to the council.
And then, then the ordinances are created at, at that, after...
You have to have a review of the ordinance drafted here.
So, so we, so we draft the ordinance here, uh, it would be introduced, then to...
Introduced, then set up for review.
There's, there's extra meeting in between, it's more than a two, two-week period.
Yeah, you have up to 30 days to review.
Yep, and then comes back.
Yeah, engineering would obviously play a part in that, that's, that's vital.
Okay, are we, uh, good for, uh, going forward and producing these ordinances? And we'll, we'll come back to this body?
Well, then I'll go back to my question. I, I think, I'm not saying it's, I actually think it's probably a good idea to deal with stormwater management, but I think you should take a broader look at all the different things people could do, 'cause just saying, just because I go up a floor, in that case, I need to do stormwater management, but other things I do, don't. I mean, if we're gonna open it up, then we should probably take a look at the whole, everything that somebody could possibly be doing that would be looking for a variance. Okay? Mr. Vogel?
Now, we do have, this is the stormwater, uh, meeting here. Okay, all right, so it'll come back and, Joe, thank you very much for presenting, and thank you for your volunteer work as our Chair of the Zoning Board of Adjustment.
Lot of fun, I enjoyed it, thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay, stormwater, number two, Stormwater Ordinance Amendment. Bob Vogel.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Um, yeah, so as far as drafting language, I'm happy to work with either Matt or Vince to get, uh, the zoning board recommendations at least drafted and, uh, section, uh, allocated in the ordinance, uh, where it could be, the ball could be started. The, uh, two ordinance proposals that I have, the language is already done, and so, uh, these relate more to the post-planning process than the planning process, because they're kind of construction-level concerns that we find during the inspection process, during the approval process, uh, after the planning board approvals are obtained. And, uh, these two items are, uh, Section 218, uh, dash 284, with regard to discharge from pumps and leaders, um, which is a clarification that just really needs to be made in the ordinance to allow everyone who, uh, improves a property in town to have very clear direction as to what to do with those leaders, drains, sump pumps, et cetera. And I think, uh, you know, as you look through the various sections of the ordinance, it really isn't clear, and this really kind of clears it up in terms of a paragraph or two. Um, uh, the second, uh, ordinance proposal is based on, uh, temporary construction or permanent easements in and around retaining walls that are built close to a property line. And again, that's become kind of a, um, a regulatory issue for us during field construction, because we are told by applicants, there won't be a problem, and yet there is a problem during construction. And these types of clarifications in the ordinance will help us regulate, not only during the plan, planning process, but in the post-planning, planning process during construction, how those projects are implemented. And, uh, again, uh, two sections of the ordinance, two very simple, uh, clarifications, and, um, you know, it's already drafted there, so if you could refer those to the board as well, um, that would be great. Otherwise, uh, again, I think you have the option to have Matt look it over and, and do it yourselves. Pat?
So just looking at the second one first, if I want to put a retaining wall up near my property line, if the height of the retaining wall is, let's say, at the most, three feet, if I don't set it back at least three feet from the property line, then I need my neighbor's permission to put that up?
Yes. And the reason for that is simply, if the wall fails, um, it's a one-on-one soil angle if the wall fails, and that's gonna affect your property owner, and I've seen it happen on several occasions in town. Um, and so, at least a letter, some type of permission, some type of, of, uh, adjoining access agreement is important to promote.
You're not saying promote, you're saying you must have it. So what if my neighbor doesn't like me and doesn't want to give me permission to do anything?
Um, you know...
Do it three feet, one inch.
There, there may be a way to, to design the retaining wall differently, um, there may be a way to design the site differently to avoid that type of complication. Uh, we just get ourselves involved in these property disputes between two property owners that are complying, yet we don't have the authority to say, you must get consent from the adjoining owner, whereas in state law, it actually says that. It just doesn't say it in our local ordinance.
There's a state law that actually says that, interesting.
State law says if you affect an adjoining property during construction, you need his consent.
What if I build it and I don't affect his property while I'm building it?
If you successfully don't affect his property, even though you're putting, uh, retaining wall very close to the property line, um, congratulations, but it's probably not a very large retaining wall, it's probably a small one. Uh, in which case, I think I could have, uh, an interpretation of how serious that problem is. If it's a small retaining wall, less than four foot high, I don't think I'm gonna make many stipulations on having to get neighbor permissions, but if it's six, eight feet high, I, I don't see any way around it, I really don't.
And how do we enforce this? Does a person who wants to put the wall up has to bring a letter to you from the neighbor saying they, they've approved the design and the building?
It's the best way.
The other one, oh, anybody else have a question? Sorry.
Go, go ahead, you're on a roll.
The other one, it says here, "Pipes designed to manage surface and groundwater must outlet into an adequate water course or yard drainage system that discourages icing, instability, erosion, undermining, heaving, molds, or other detrimental seasonal conditions to adjoining public or private properties." That sounds pretty broad. How do you enforce that, or how do you, how do you know that, you know, what is, you know, how do I know what mold is or isn't gonna be encouraged by putting my water into what I think is a, a fair place to put it?
Um, I, I think the paragraph is intended to make people aware of this series of problems that can develop by an improperly located, uh, leader or sump pump discharge. Uh, certainly, it doesn't imply that we have mold police in town. We don't.
But this, this applies to not just sump pumps, but just downspout leaders also, correct?
Correct.
So this, this applies to virtually every, now it applies to every house in town, unless you don't have leaders.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Uh, if we place it in Chapter 218, it would apply to essentially every house. If you place it in 195, it would be anything approved by the boards.
So in my neighborhood where there's fairly hilly property, um, if the person who lives behind you says that the water coming off your house is causing a problem, who owns the responsibility for proving that? That, them or the owner of the house who they think is dumping the water into their yard?
Uh, often, it's, uh, a property dispute between two private property owners, uh, if the public is not directly affected, but we get dragged into those disputes all the time. Uh, and so, you know, I think having the clarification is, uh, is a, is a helpful, is helpful to us.
But is this gonna, is this gonna clarify that, or is this gonna put us into more disputes?
I think it would put us in less disputes, quite honestly, only because the, it's more clear about what options are available.
Dealing with retaining walls, the other big issue that, that happens often is runoff. You put in the retaining wall, but very often with the retaining walls, they have pipes that direct flows of water, they, very often, we've dealt with disputes where the water goes on the neighbor's property, and probably better for us to have an expert such as Bob take a look at it to make sure that it's gonna be compliant and hopefully resolve a dispute before it ever occurs.
Well, I don't have an issue with the engineer weighing in on whether the wall is gonna help or hinder the situation. My concern is if you get into a situation where you have two neighbors who are not on good terms, and somebody can just say, I'm not gonna approve that wall as long as you want to put it, you know, put it up at all, and it's gonna create a big problem when you're trying to do some sort of construction.
We can, we can, I can look at this with Bob and come up with language that might satisfy both.
I mean, I prefer if the professional was the one making the decision, not two neighbors.
I'm happy to act as an arbiter in those situations, but I, I think the ordinance deserves a heads up as far as that's concerned.
I don't mind there being notice and possibly, I don't know, there's either sign if there isn't, but I'm just concerned that you're gonna create situations where neighbors can get into disputes where really we should be, or professionals should be the one making the decision whether it's the right thing to do in that particular situation.
Well, then, maybe that's part, that should be included in the, in the ordinance proposal as well, Pat. I think that's a good recommendation.
Rob?
Yeah, I mean, I just had a real-life example, um, from a house I used to own, where the P, I lived, it was on a hill, the people that lived up, one up and one over, they did a major construction project and they put a retaining wall. In some cases, like, three inches, I think, I think you may remember what I'm talking about. And, and then they also put a pool up there, and when it would rain, I mean, we would have waterfalls coming down that, but also, it would like kind of escape down around. Now, we never really suffered that badly from it, but what would happen is the water would run, 'cause it's a hill, we all know how gravity works, it would run down and just flood the guy under me, and he would come and look to me for relief, as if, you know, somehow this, the gravity is my fault. But would this new ordinance, I mean, you know, who would be held responsible? Would it be, let's say that happens again, is it the person who ultimately is at the highest point where the runoff starts, or is it the adjacent property who did nothing, who didn't build anything?
Either, if it's not due to a sump pump or a leader, if it's just water hitting the ground, or not, and not perking in, then it's not covered by any of these.
For sure.
My sense is who constructs the wall, or who constructs the pool, what are we responsible for the impacts?
So you, that'll be clear in, in this, I mean, 'cause, I, like, at the time, I don't know if they had, you could always argue, oh, you have drain spouts and it's just running, that's just adding to the problem, and that's what's pushing it over the edge, blah, blah, blah. And it's, that's the sort of thing where I think we have to be really careful.
Um, I, I've attempted to draw that out in the... I've attempted to draw that out in the ordinance, and I think we should go through it one more time and finish up that proposal. Good recommendation.
Other thoughts or questions? We'll work on a draft ordinance based on that feedback.
Again, if either Matt can take it, or Vince over at the planning board can take this, and I'll work with either, obviously. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. 2016 Electric Utility Rebate Program, Ben?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. In 2014, we introduced a rebate program for residents who are financially challenged as defined by an income level associated with certain family size. And if indeed you were approved and in effect were eligible, you could receive $100 against your electric utility bill. So, it's a limited program, but nevertheless, it addressed the needs of people who needed it, and it proved to be reasonably successful. It was continued last year. There was a falloff in the number of people who applied inexplicably, but nevertheless, it was still a fair number of people, and for that reason, I would propose that we continue it in 2016.
Any thoughts, questions? It's Resolution 113 on the consent. Pat?
So, you know, my preference is still, we cut the electric rates, but I, my preference is still we cut electric rates, but when we first started this, I think we were targeting as much as $100,000 towards this, and I think the first year, we got about $35,000 worth of takers. Last year, we're down to $27,000.
Correct.
Have we considered possibly upping it? I don't know why we had such a big falloff, but it seemed kind of odd. I would have thought it would have been, it would have increased year over year, not decreased by 25, 30%.
Yeah, we had not set a number as a ceiling with the expectation that it wouldn't end up being a very large number anyway, but if the council would be more comfortable certainly setting a number on the order of, say, $50,000 would make sense.
Well, I'm thinking, no, I'm thinking we should actually increase it, because if we're getting such a small...
Increase the rebate.
Yeah, I mean, we're getting such a small response, it seems like maybe if we upped it, we'd get back to the number we were at. I mean, we're trying to help some people out. It seems like it's not working. Well, that's, no, well, we could try that, but that would take a little bit of research and a lot of work. I'm saying just increase the amount of money we're giving out, because that's the easiest thing to do.
So, 100, like, 150, for example, instead of 100?
Yeah, I mean, we're well below what we thought we were going to give away, or giveaway's not the right word.
You know, the $100 was arbitrary.
I know.
Seemed like enough of a number that it was worth your while to fill out a piece of paper. $150 would be equally arbitrary, I have no objection to it.
I mean, I think we kind of budgeted that much.
I don't think it would affect anything in the electric department that we're concerned about right now. But I have trouble believing that the reason we had the falloff was the number. But again, I have no idea why we had that falloff.
Do we go back and ask anybody who dropped off the list, why?
Tried to be very arm's length, and, you know, keep people's privacy, we're very sensitive to that, so we not wanted to go and interview people.
Oh, I'm just wondering if you polled some people.
Hadn't been done.
Leave it at 100, go with 125?
I'll take sense of the council, I mean, I'm open to it.
Our CFO, any thoughts? 125, go in once?
Well, I think...
I see your 125, I'll raise you 150.
Yeah.
150?
If we're going to do this, why don't we just go to 150?
150, okay.
And still, if it's anything like, even the first year, $50,000 would still be a maximum amount we would need.
It's still 50, yes.
So, the same qualifications, and we'll just change the ordinance, the resolution rather, to read 150.
Good, I appreciate that, and I'm sure the people who are eligible for this would appreciate, will appreciate it as well.
The amount, the amount's not in the, okay, it's not in the resolution, so we're...
I'll mark it outside.
Yeah, it's actually not even in the resolution, so we'll just...
Yes, no, 113.
Yeah, but the...
Oh, you mean the number?
The dollar amount's not in there, yep, so we, so we can just change the application and...
Okay.
Thank you very much. Ordinances for hearing, will the clerk please read the statement?
Okay, the ordinance is scheduled for a hearing, were introduced by title and passed on the first reading at the regular meeting of the council, held on Monday, March 14, 2016. They were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
I call up ordinances for second reading, ask the clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 10, 2016 is calendar year 2016, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
I open the hearing for ordinance 10. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 10-2016.
I second it. Counsel discussion. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 10-2016 adopted and finally passed, I ask the clerk to publish notice there of the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 11, 2016, ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 185-32 of the Borough Code to include time limit restrictions for parking on Belmont Avenue and Washington Drive.
I open the hearing for ordinance 11. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 11-2016.
I'll second the motion.
Counsel discussion. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 11-2016 adopted and finally passed, I ask the clerk to publish notice in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 12, 2016, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $30,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund to purchase a pad mount transformer for E-Well Pump Station.
I open the hearing for ordinance 12. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing. Ben?
Am I here?
That's a bottom page.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes. I move ordinance 12-2016.
I'll second it.
Counsel discussion. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 12-2016 adopted and finally passed, I ask the clerk to publish notice of the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 13, 2016, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $105,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a 16-foot lawnmower.
I open the hearing for ordinance 13, 2016. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance 13-2016.
I second.
Counsel discussion?
How fast does it go? How many people does it seat? 405 grand, I mean?
As we did mention this the last meeting, that...
I'm sorry, I missed the last.
Yeah, it's more of a tractor, not a lawnmower, and it's got the hydraulics that lifts the decks up, and so it's road, it is, it is roadworthy and so on, so...
Okay, great, as long as we get our money's worth.
It's not your grandfather's lawn mower.
Your grandfather's 16-foot lawnmower, gotcha, okay.
Any other discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 13-2016 adopted and finally passed, I ask the clerk to publish notice in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And now, we're on to the second invitation for discussion. This is when you may comment on anything, but again, keep your comments to three minutes or less. When you step up the lectern, state your name, your address, and write the same on the clipboard. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we go on to introduction of ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Okay, the ordinance is scheduled for first reading, have a hearing date set for April 11, 2016. Will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinance 14, 2016 for first reading, ask the clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance 14, 2016, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $22,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for replacement of a brick planter on Waverly Place. Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance 14-2016.
Second motion?
Counsel discussion?
Yes, I have a question. This is on the order of the lawnmower question. What are these planters? I intended to go over to see them, and I...
Yeah, well, it is confusing in that the planters might, it's a center island on Waverly Place with the brick.
Yes.
So, if you look at it, it is in bad disrepair, the wall is falling apart, so it's, I would call it, describe it more than just planters, it is a full structure and will be...
Yes, now I know which we were referring to.
Garden Club.
Yes, right, okay. Just seems like a lot of money for that.
Yeah, good question, though, because as planters go, that would be expensive.
So, if I'm not mistaken, the DDC has a trust that is well-funded. Does it make sense to consult with them about potential design changes or cost sharing for this? If I understand that that trust continues to grow in size year after year, and maybe if they want to get involved, they can, with design, they can chip in for some of the costs, or is that not...
It certainly could be possible. What my feedback to the, at the last DDC meeting was that this is more of a maintenance thing and not necessarily where their funds has gone into new initiatives such as the lights under the overpasses, the wayfinding signage, and other things like that. If we were...
22 grand's a lot of money for rehab, you know, maybe spend a little more and redesign it with their input. Is it worth the talk of that?
Jimmy, you want to step up the microphone?
So internally, Rob, we looked at a couple of different options, and Russ Brown and I were looking at them, and this is really a complete rebuild. We looked at less expensive options, but realized it really wasn't going to solve the problem. One of the issues is the top, which is multiple layers of brick, is going to be replaced with like a slate bluestone, so the water won't migrate in. In terms of the DDC, I believe it was briefly discussed, there is a fairly large project that is looming that I'm hopeful the DDC will get involved in, which is the community space over at GVR. That's being given to the borough, kind of in a plain vanilla-white box, and there'll be a significant amount of improvements that will be needed over there, so thinking it would be best to have them direct their funds towards that. That will take much more than funds they have, that'll probably require some outside fundraising as well.
Outside fundraising. I'm going to hold you to that, Jimmy, outside fundraising. No, my question was if they wanted to get involved in the design, in the design, then, you know, maybe they wanted to chip in.
Any other discussion? Okay, roll call, vote on ordinance 14.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance, I call up ordinance 15, 2016.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $25,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for replacement of alarm system for the utility infrastructure. Mr. Mayor, I'll move ordinance 15-2016.
Second.
This is, again, emergency appropriation. Any further discussion, or any discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Okay, and our administrator did some quick homework here. The $100 rebate was in ordinance 6, 2015, so to go up to $150, we will have to introduce the ordinance that would raise it to $150. So, we can introduce that now. We'll need the, either our attorney or clerk to read this ordinance into the record, and have a motion to move that forward.
Matt can read it.
Matt, you can. So, I call up ordinance 16 for first reading.
Okay, this is an ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 94 of the Borough Code entitled Electric Utility to amend the rules and regulations of the Electric Utility Department and set forth requirements to establish rebate credit program. And whereas the Borough Administrator has recommended amending the electric utility rules and regulations in order to include a new section establishing an annual electric utility rebate credit program, and whereas the Madison Borough Attorney has recommended that the amended rules and regulations be adopted by ordinance incorporated into Chapter 94 as Section 94-1D, now therefore be ordained by the Council of the Borough of Madison and the County of Morris and the State of New Jersey as follows. Section 1, Section 94-1 of the Borough Code entitled Schedule of Rates shall have the following paragraph added. D, $150 per applicant targeted annual electric utility rebate credit program is hereby established for income-eligible Madison residents, subject to annual appropriations, therefore, in the municipal budget. The program guidelines, eligibility criteria, and application process attached to 2 to be set forth in Appendix A. This ordinance shall take effect as provided by law.
I have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance 16-2016.
I second it.
Any further discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions, will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda, excuse me, consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Okay, and we can pull Resolution 113 since it is established by ordinance, we don't really need to do that resolution, so...
Okay, so I therefore move Resolutions 1, 0, 7-2016 through 1, 19-2016, with the exception of 113-2016.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
We have no unfinished business? Approval of vouchers?
Public safety, $28,391.67. Health and public assistance, $1,666.13. Public works and engineering, $79,914.73. Community affairs, $9,264.93. Finance and Borough Clerk, $3,381,733.27. Utilities, $738,601.40. The total is $4,239,572.13.
I move...
Mr. Mayor, I move vouchers.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?